Hi, everybody. My name is Alice Freed and I'd like to welcome you to the Vacaville People's Forum City Council Candidate Forum. Sergio.
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Sergio Masia. I'm also going to be co-hosting with Ms. Alice. Glad to be here. I'm just a kid from Vacaville, graduated from Wilson Wood in 2019. Currently attending UC Davis, hoping to go back to the place I'm proud to call home in a couple of years. And I'm also a very proud Girls Club alumni.
Great. Tonight, we're meeting with our 2022 City Council candidates and we're from all of the even districts, District 2, 4, and 6. This is a, this is a program set up by the People's, the People's Forum to make sure that our citizens are informed about who's running for office to represent them on the Vacaville City Council. Sergio.
Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead, welcome the candidates that are here with us today. I do want to inform all of you that all candidates running for City Council in Vacaville were invited to this event. Some were unable to attend due to other conflicts, some declined to participate, and others did not respond to our invitation to participate. A one-minute statement will be timed. I'm going to go ahead and introduce to all of you our candidates. So first up is Mr. Greg Ritchie.
Greg Ritchie is here present tonight, and why don't we just go through the districts and let you know the candidates who are here? From District 2, we have Greg Ritchie. Mr. Joseph DiMaris is not able to come. Kristen in District 4, Kristen Navarro is not unable to come, and we have Christian Scott though, and Sarah Chapman. For District 6, we have Topac Chastain, Jennifer House, who's unable to attend because of a previous conflict. Jeanette Wiley, Raymond Beatty did not respond to our information. As the rule said, this is a forum and not a debate. All candidates will be given one minute to provide a brief introduction of themselves and why they are running. All candidates will get the same question, and they are to respond to the question, not other panelists. You will have two minutes to answer each question. Each candidate will be given a signal at 15 seconds as notification. It is time to wrap up this question, and that will be given in the chat, so be on the lookout for when you see something in the chat all of a sudden. The order of answering has been randomized and will change with each question. Candidates can ask for questions to be repeated, and every candidate will be given 30 seconds to close at the end of the forum. And now you can go through the list to have them introduce themselves.
Alright, Mr. Greg Ritchie, you're the first one on our list. You are running for District 2. Just wanted to put that out there.
We lost your sound.
Yeah.
You're up.
Okay. Well, first of all, thanks so much to everybody for letting me come and attend this amazing event, the second year in the Vacaville Forum. I'll use a few seconds of my minute. So Sergio, I had the opportunity to meet you numerous times now the last year, and I think I'd rather spend my time talking with you. If I'd never heard you ever say again, "I'm just a kid from Vacaville," I would be happy, you know? As being a fellow minority and knowing the power of empowering us, like, you're not just a kid, you're an amazing young man. And you're coming back, you're coming back and crushing it. So, I mean, just never, never downplay it. You have to be your best champion. So for me, I'm from Vacaville, born and raised, I'm proud of it too. And I'll never downplay that. I feel honored to have the opportunity to come back to the city. That's where I'm raised in, and now I have small business, raise my kids, and become elected official to help usher Vacaville in a direction that makes people like you, me, and everybody feel comfortable, welcome. I'm pro-growth, but I'm also pro-social growth. I keep saying that, like, I want to empower the community, empower the city. Everyone feels welcome and wanted, so I had to use that opportunity, Sergio, like, that's a part of why I ran, to empower you to have the courage to be strong and walk it with confidence and see, you're not just, you're not just anything, you know? That's it.
Well, Mr. Ritchie, thank you. Up next, we have Mr. Christian Scott from District 4.
Mute, there we go. Yeah, I'm Christian Scott, running for District 4, and I am a small business owner, contractor, father and husband. I've got four wonderful kids at home, and I'm also a person that goes out and works in the homeless community. I'm a pastor over at the Mission Church in Vacaville, and also at City Church in Fairfield, where we do a lot of work with taking people off the streets, out of homelessness, and getting them to a place where they can gain employment and housing and just a fresh start in life. I decided to run because I didn't want to be one of the people that complained and didn't stand up and get involved and do something about it. And decided to really be the change that I wanted to see in my community. Also, we're in District 4 for the first time. We are going to have equal representation. Now that we're elected by district, we will actually have a District 4 representative in the council. And that is amazing and really exciting for District 4 because we need, we need a lot of help here in District 4. Things have kind of gone downhill, and we haven't seen all of the the love and the budget or just in the community that we've needed, so I'm looking forward to to getting to work on that and solving homelessness in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Christian Scott. Up next, we have Ms. Sarah Chapman from District 4.
Good evening. Thank you for having this forum to recognize the candidates that are running. I'm a longtime resident of Vacaville. My children were raised here, went through the school system. Right now, I'm on the College Board, so I'm on the Community College Board and serving as the president. My issue, not my issue, my concern for District 4, I want to bring equity, I want to bring I want to bring awareness to the need of the people of District 4. I am a listener. I believe in hearing the concerns and the issues that confronting the residents. And many of them have spoken to me in regards to their concerns about what's going on in District 4, the crime rate. We've talked about the economy as far as livable wages. We've spoken of the unsheltered individuals. So with all of that, I am, I'm here to serve, I'm here to be the voice for those in District 4 that for years have been going without the amenities that are available in other sections of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah Chapman. Up next, we have Mr. Topoc Chastain from District 6.
Is he muted? Unmute yourself, Mr. Chastain.
Thank you, frozen.
He is frozen.
My name is Topac Chastain. I'm running for District 6. Oh, I just lost my feel. It is because our roads are dangerous to walk.
Mr. Chastain, we're having trouble hearing you.
Your connection is off. We can't hear you.
Yes. Hello, is it okay to go?
Maybe if you try it without your video and just your voice, it'll all come through.
My name is Topac Chastain. I'm running for City Council, District 6.
Fix that.
Why don't we move on to the next candidate and see if Mr. Chastain can fix his, his connection and come back to him?
Sure, that sounds great. Up next, we have Ms. Jeanette Wiley from
So is he going or am I going?
Well, we can't hear Mr. Chastain.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and have you go first.
Okay, my name is Jeanette Wiley. I was elected in 2020 for the Vacaville City Council, District 6. So I'm running for reelection to continue as serving the residents as the voice of South Vacaville. I have lived in this district for 31 years. I have worked hard. I've been involved with these issues in the city. I've learned a lot about the complexity of all the different departments, and I want to build on that knowledge and serve for four years. I've had a lot of positive feedback about my work as a council member, and I feel like I have learned a lot and am willing to work hard. I feel like we need to provide a full-service city for all citizens, make good economic decisions, make good housing choices, and have services for youth, families, and seniors. I'm currently the only senior on the council and also the only woman. I'm, as a retired teacher, I bring an important perspective to the table. And I will just say the reason why we are running is because we had a two-year term because of staggered terms, and now it will be a four-year term. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Jeanette Wiley. Mr. Topoc Chastain, if your connection is working now, I'll go ahead and get spotlight back to you. Alright, there we go. You're up.
You're on mute. Unmute.
You're seeing me now?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay. I can't see anybody here right now. So my name is Topac Chastain. I'm running for City Council, District 6. The reason I'm running for City Council is because our roadways are dangerous to walk down and drive down. Our schools are overcrowded. We're building houses without any regard to the utilities that we have that supply the houses with the services needed. And, and so, anyway, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Topoc Chastain.
Hello?
Alright, so we're going to go ahead and move on. So we're going to go ahead and move on to our first question. So I'm going to introduce Mr. Johnny Con George. He will be speaking on the topic of divisiveness in the community. Mr. Johnny Con George, if you can please unmute yourself, brief介绍一下 who you are, and go ahead and ask your question. Once he's done asking his question, I'm going to go ahead and reach out to our candidates here today, one by one, and they can provide an answer to this question. So, Mr. Johnny Con, you are up.
Thank you, Sergio. My name is Johnny Con George. I'm the president of the Tri-City in ACP. We advocate for Fairfield to Southern Vacaville. I've been president since 2017. I wear many hats in the community. I'm actually honored to be here today. Vacaville is one of our cities, and I vow to be more involved in Vacaville. As to my question, the global pandemic, politics, police, civil unrest, and social issues have divided our community more now than ever. How, as an elected official, will you turn down the temperature and bring people together? Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Johnny Con George. So on my list, I have Mr. Topoc Chastain up first. Mr. Topoc Chastain, if you can please unmute yourself, and you will have two minutes to answer this question.
Sergio, sorry, it looks like we lost Mr. Chastain, so we may need to just move on to the next candidate and then alter the order all the way down. And hopefully we'll get him back on Zoom by the time we've rotated through the question, through this first question. We'll give him a call right now.
Sure. Okay, so up next on my list is Ms. Jeanette Wiley.
The question is very timely and very important. I see divisiveness throughout the city many times. I think one of the biggest ways to address the problem is communicate, communicate, communicate. Because when people say, well, he said, she said, or people say to their friends something, but don't address the problem in a forthright way, then that is a problem. So communicate is the first thing. I feel like we need to provide a variety of services so that it's not just like, oh, well, this is the way we do it, so let's do it that way, and everybody better like better like our way of doing it. So provide a variety of services and recognize different holidays and different things rather than just one way. Another big thing we need to do is consciously work to overcome preconceived ideas. I think people think, well, here's this or here's that. And only when you communicate and really interact with people in a different way can you say, oh, maybe I was wrong with that, or I didn't really realize that it colored my thinking like that, and make people aware of preconceived ideas. Next, do not tolerate hate. We cannot have and not deal with, you know, hateful language, hateful behavior, hateful things in our community. I think we need to continue the activities that Vacaville's People's Forum has been very helpful with, with our Pride activities, with the BU, with Black History Observances, so that people can see different sorts of things. And, you know, I talk with people at those kind of events, and they say, well, this is really nice. Oh, yeah, this is interesting. And different people come forward as leaders, so that's, that's very good. We have the place of peace, but the place of peace needs to not just be a name, we have to really live that out. The same thing with, I have asked the city manager when we did in the workshop with inclusive equity and diversity. Well, what are we doing now? How are we moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeanette Wiley. Up next, we have Ms. Sarah Chapman from District 4.
Mute, you muted, unmute.
Thank you. I was stated, this is a very timely question. To me, diversity, equity, and inclusion are outcomes of respecting the humanity and dignity of everyone without fear. We all know that consideration hasn't really been been provided or given from elected officials. For instance, in my fight to make sure District 4 gets parks and recreation opportunities, I will be guided by the fact that the district has consistently been underrepresented, and amenities such as parks with restrooms are not available, as an example. We have been denied, we've been, District 4 has been denied through the years. And I will, without fear, negotiate from that premise to ensure a solution that not only recognize the inequity, but works to rectify it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah Chapman. Up next, we have Mr. Christian Scott from District 4.
Alright, hi there. So divisiveness, you know, I'll tell you, I've witnessed things in the city when we were having a lot of protests, and the the Black Lives Matter group would be marching up the street, and the police would be marching down the street towards them, and I found myself in the middle of both groups and just really trying to be the peacemaker. I think that my, that my faith on this one, being involved in decision-making to to focus on what we have in common rather than what the differences are. I've been contacted since I've been running by people that have asked me to choose a side. Who do you, which side are you on? And like, I mean, honestly, I'm on the Lord's side, I'm on everybody's side, and I think that we can accomplish this unity that is critical to the success of our community by, you know, utilizing, I think, as corny as it sounds, love. You know, if we, if we do these things in love and we don't focus on judging each other and being haves and have-nots and us and them, we can come together on these things. We don't have to have the same national politics to get along. We don't have to be from the same areas or the same ethnic backgrounds. We can actually get along. And we can, we can thrive together as a community. And so for me, in the position on City Council, this would be a strong pull on my faith to, you know, to just lead by example and be inclusive with everybody from whatever ethnic background they are, whatever their particular lifestyle is, or if they're housed or unhoused or whatever. These are citizens in our community. These are our brothers and sisters, and I think if we come at it from that point of view, that we can overcome all of the obstacles that would tend to rip us apart as a community. It's time for healing. Honestly, we've been so divided, even in our country, that we desperately need healing. And for that to happen, we need to react in love to each other and understanding rather than judgment and accusation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Christian Scott. Up next, we have Mr. Greg Ritchie from District 2.
Thanks so much. So this is a very interesting topic. I'll try not to repeat the same things because they get kind of repetitive and silly, but yeah, it was, it was interesting. My friendship and knowing, like, example, Johnny Con George came from running the City Council. And until you kind of realize those kind of things, you realize, wow, I should have known him far before I tried to become elected official because the roles and what certain positions, especially CP and passionate people do, to try to bring us together in community. So it was a humble experience to acknowledge that I wasn't involved in certain organizations I should have been until I needed to be. And so, you know, you have to first adjust, and I think it's a learning experience for the whole nation people. You have to acknowledge your rights and wrongs, what you can do to do better, and that's it was, it was an refreshing point for myself to really, wow, you know, there are certain things I can do better, but I ran City Council, and one of the things was exactly not even the national areas take place in our community. I looked at Vacaville, and I did not want to see Vacaville be a community where we have, I felt it was tribalism in America. Everyone wanted to be in little camps, this camp, that camp, have their flags, who they are. And what it comes down to is about who you are inside. It's not about what color you claim, your party, your preference, your little cult group. It's about who are you as a person, and we need to make sure. And I felt it was time. It was time to kind of step up and be representative of the community as an African-American man. And my unique position was, I have a, I had a very close position, I still do, all transparency with like public safety as my, as of my business, and I've overcome a lot to see these people, trust me. Sorry. And so I wanted to be able to have that same kind of feeling and project that where, as a minority, we can overcome many goals if they were impossible, and have people come together and bring in exclusivity to the city. Oh, sorry, time's up.
Next, we will have Christina Palmer ask a question, and this one is about the quality of life and measure M. Christina?
Alice, Alice, we have to go back to Topac.
Oh, he's back. Okay.
Yes.
Great. Well, Mr. Topac, great. I didn't see him up there.
Hello, can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yes.
Excellent. Can you please repeat the question?
Sure, I'll go ahead and repeat it.
You got it? Well, you got it, Sergio?
Go for it. I'll go ahead and have you answer your question, yeah.
Alright. The global pandemic, politics, police, civil unrest, and social issues have divided our community more than ever. How, as an elected official, will you turn down the temperature and bring our people together?
That's a great question, a great question. So during the pandemic, what we had going on for technology was at City Council meetings, we were allowing people to participate using social media and communications just like this. For whatever reason, within a few months of the pandemic being declared over here in Vacaville, we stopped that communication. We stopped equity. We stopped the community that needed to be able to communicate to the council and participate in local government from participating in it. And when we do that, we end up raising suspicion, distrust, and really uncertainty in our community. People's voices were removed. What the first thing I would do is allow people to have a voice in Vacaville, District 6. We talk about the voice of providing the voice for South Town, the voice for District 6. The voice has been muted, the voice has been silenced. So, so simple things like that need to be done to have inclusiveness, equity, diversity. We all have to be given the tools to be able to communicate and participate. And when that's blatantly removed, then we're all being done a disservice. Thank you.
Okay, so now we can go to Christina Palmer to ask her a question about the quality of life and measure M. Christina, I don't see you up here, but you here?
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, good.
I'm here. Hi, everyone. As a former commissioner for community services in Vacaville, a question's based off of Measure M. In 2021, the City Council approved the revised Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The last time the city conducted a recreations needs assessment was in 2013. Vacaville is producing roughly 12 million annually in Measure M funds, but have only allocated 3 million for allocation to beauty, to beautify and enhance our existing parks and use towards, and use towards city services like recreation programs and safety services. What are the biggest Parks and Recreation priorities? What are your biggest Parks and Recreation priorities, and how would you fund upgrades? How would you prioritize which Parks or Recreation needs get addressed first?
Okay, I will call on each candidate separately here to respond to this question. The first one is Jeanette Wiley.
Thank you very much for the question. I think parks are very important to all of our residents across town, but unfortunately, not everyone has equal access to parks. I do want to say that the amount you said, like 12 million for Measure M, a lot of that is, goes to other areas outside of parks, but if we have the 3 million for parks, we need to use it to the best advantage. I feel like we need to up, do updates to the parks that we have before we start building a lot of new parks. Because some of the parks across town really need a lot more equipment cleaned up and just better appearance and use for the, for the people. I do think that I am not really in favor of just building a great big facility with our measure M money. I would rather update the facilities that we have. And I was talking to a person the other day who said, I was, we were talking about Magnolia Park, and I said, it gets a lot of use. And she said, yes, but then I can never get a baby swing because, you know, there's three baby swings or eight baby swings or however many, and, you know, they were always in use. So just looking at the things that people need in the parks, I feel like, you know, the lighting and the fencing need to be better for some of the parks as well, and pedestrian walkways to get to the parks. We have some parks here across Nut Tree, and families say they can't send their kids to the park because they can't, you know, let them walk across Nut Tree or go across Leisure Town to get to the park. Another issue is like bathrooms. Everyone would love to have a bathroom in the park, but that is really expensive to have. So you have to kind of look at, can you change the park in other ways? We had big issues with trying to serve the people that need the parks, especially in that area, you know, behind Elmira where there's a lot of apartments and no real good parks within walking distance. So a comprehensive look at the park. So a comprehensive look at the parks, how they're used and what we can do to help them.
Next up is Sarah Chapman. Mute, unmute.
Okay, thank you. Uh, District Four, um, is the most diverse, uh, district. And it's most densely populated with the least amount of parks and recreation, uh, recreational uh, facilities for our youth. Uh, our youth is one, is a, it's a high priority for me, serving them, addressing their needs and their desires. Out, the parks are in need, are in need of many amenities. Um, and the majority of the parks do not have restrooms on them, on the premises. It is, it would be my, I would make it a priority to look at the poorest and the most rundown parts and needs. And, um, that, and identify which one needs the most help. And with that information, I would work for them to be addressed first. That would be my first priority. That's exactly how I would prioritize. And address this question, but keeping, keeping in my, my priority being the youth and then the youth and family and how important recreation is to both. Thank you.
Okay, next would be Mr. Tupac Christian, uh, I'm sorry, Chris, Christian Scott.
Uh, okay, yeah, Mr. Tupac Christian, there you go. Um, so yeah, I look at the parks around here and, uh, one of the big concerns for me is the, uh, creek. The creek walk that goes around there, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. And, um, e- even in the creek itself, really, it needs a lot of maintenance. And also the Three Oaks Community Center, um, you know, I've been going around there and taking a look at it and the, the, um, asphalt there and the driveway and the parking lot is horrible with potholes and just, it's, it's like going off-road when you go in there. Um, it really does need to be, uh, repaved. And I think that, um, you know, in certainly in District Four, I mean, to have a skate park there, it's, it's a place where a lot of the kids, a lot of the youth gather, uh, gone down there and interfaced with them and talked to them and met with them and, and I found that, um, that place has just kind of gone downhill a little bit. So um, I would say that, that really those two areas would be my biggest concern as far as uh, where to put this, this budget money.
Thank you. Next is, uh, Greg Ritchie, District Two.
I had, I mean, but, um, yeah, the parks is, it's interesting. Uh, because measuring funds, the amount of money that we are, uh, year-over-year increasing the budget, but I, I think really, I, I want to start with, we can have twelve million, thirty million. Um, but the real, the real thing I think we're proud of, I think as elected officials so far, is the people that are in the positions now, like Ms. Ayesha, then we have, um, Mary. You know, if you don't have the good stewards, the money will sit there. We had that, I mean, I think the biggest un- unspoken, unsung hero of what we have a person, Rex, is people that we have now serving it. Um, we have to have passionate voices that people actually want to allocate the funds, want to ensure that these things are used, have voices that are speaking for the communities. Um, that, that's, that's the most important part. Um, you can have all the tools in a tool chest, if you don't utilize them, they're not going to work. So having people there that are passionate and actually care over the community, the children, um, and the usage of parks, I think is the most important element. Money is money. We'll, we'll lose it, we'll spend it, but having them to utilize it and make sure we know what to do and say yes to. Um, no, I think, look back at, I born, raised in Vacaville. I moved eleven times. Seven degrees, the parents are divorced. I played in Harrison Park. Um, I was in Beale Park just a few days ago. I mean, there's certain parts we can do. We can look at the city map. And we need to give love to the oldest first, so it can spiral, sort of times out, um, spiral out. Bottom line, we need, need to give love to the older parts first and allow those communities to have better access and better money where it's going to be best spent. Um, I'd rather have more amenities than, um, you know. Uh, I guess sometimes I'm sorry. Is that my timer?
No, that's your turn.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, and now, not necessarily, because you, you were last, the last time, I'm afraid you're last again this time, Mr. Christian, but that's only because you missed out on your first chance to be first the last time. So now it's for Tupac Chastain to answer this question.
You know, i- it sounds like we're making this party to be a lot more complicated than it really is. What, what we need to be doing is, is understanding that a lot of this money is going to pay for administrative salaries and not going into the maintenance of the parks. The simplest thing in the world is to paint two stripes on the road and put two signs up right next to those two stripes and create a crosswalk. It needn't take more than one or two council meetings to get a crosswalk put in next to a park or crossing the road. A little bit of consulting with traffic engineering and it's all done. Nobody's life need be put in jeopardy because we couldn't figure out how to paint two lines on the road for a crosswalk. The bathrooms in the parks have been an issue because of, we don't want the homeless to be able to use them. This is coming from the perspective of a person that worked in public works for ten years. What they do is they lock the bathrooms out of the transit center and around town because there's messes made in them. They leave it open to city staff, though. It's not fair, it's not right. These issues need to be addressed. And potholes in the roadways at parks, the, oh, okay, I did to the, to the, the poles and the roadways in these parks, these are easy things to fix. These aren't things that take a lot of money. They don't take millions upon millions of Measure M dollars to run a patch truck and fix the potholes in the parks or the streets. So we're really making it a lot more complicated than it needs to be. Hugh Hesterman is the gentleman that was responsible for creating the Parks Master Plan. After his retirement, we pretty much moved on and decided that we were going to do other things with our time and our money. And then what we did is we hired a bunch of staff to basically suck that money up as administration fees. If we, you know, we hire another administrative assistant, another analyst, and that's where all your money's going. So you're never going to see improvements in your parks when you, when you spend it on people that just talk about the improvements and never send anybody out to do them. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I distracted you. I just got excited.
Sergio?
Um, all right.
I appreciate, yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I was having trouble with my camera. All right, I got it working now, though. Um, thank you, Ms. Christina Palmer, for your question. Really appreciate it. Up next, we have Mr. Ryan Rucker up. He's going to be speaking on the topic of equity and inclusion. Uh, Mr. Ryan Rucker, please feel free to, uh, introduce yourself. And once you're done, you can go ahead and, um, share your question with us.
All right, happy to do it. Hello, everybody. Thank you all for being here on this Wednesday night. Uh, via Zoom, it's a, it's an honor to be here with you all. So, uh, I'm Ryan Rucker, former Vice Chair on the Parks and Rec Commission, um, spent two terms, four years, absolutely loved it. Um, outside of that, uh, most importantly, I'm a dad, husband, I've got two daughters. Um, love being a dad. Uh, I'm an author and, um, you know, just a resident of Vacaville. I love the city, love this town. Uh, Willsey Wood graduates, um, back in, uh, back in two thousand and four, a little while ago. But I'm honored to be back, came back for a reason after moving around for a little bit, because it's a great place for family. So, again, thank you all for being here. Uh, so my question, there is a fifty-year trend, uh, showing that Vacaville is increasingly becoming a more diverse city, uh, just representative of a wider group of people than in years past. Uh, so now for all of you, if elected, your job will be to represent the interests of all constituents in your district. Uh, so can you give me at least one specific example of how diversity, equity, and inclusion will guide your decisions as city council members?
All right, thank you, Mr. Ryan Rucker. Uh, Mr. Chapman, you are up for, uh, the question.
Thank you. The first question that was asked this evening, I touched on that. I touched on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I went even further to give an example. Primarily, I'm going to have to say that when we look at diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I'm going to use, um, District Four, how it's very important for us to hear the ideas, the diverse ideas of the people that live in District Four, no matter how, how different, how their perspective may be, it needs to be heard. And in hearing that, oftentimes I've also stated how diverse District Four is. And in hearing the diverse opinions, we can't neglect it. We can't ignore their ideas or, or their concerns. They must be taken into consideration. We must include those thoughts and those concerns in our decision-making process. Equity, when I mentioned the parks and how run down they are, we need to look at that and look at the impact that is having on the lives of the people in District Four. Equity is, does not exist there. It does not exist when you consider. And I'm mentioning the parks because that, we just finished talking on that topic. The things that are missing in, uh, as far as, um, the needs, uh, the amenities that each of these parks are in need of, without providing them, we are doing just that. We are putting that uh, diversity, equity, inclusion. We are bringing it all together and it all stems around respect, respecting the human element there. And so, thank you.
You, Ms. Sarah Chapman. Up next, we have Mr. Christian Scott.
There we go. Um, so, you know, when we talk about inclusiveness and equity, what I've been doing for, uh, quite some time now, even before, um, announcing that I was going to run for city council, is going throughout the neighborhoods, um, daily, pretty much, and meeting people and asking them what their concerns are. And not just the people that I knock on the door of their house, but people in the homeless community, uh, the business owners in the area, just, uh, everybody that's around. And I feel like when you just get out and you talk to people, then you, you do, you get a sense of what your constituents really want to see. Um, you get a, a nice, uh, variety, a nice diversity of, of things that they're interested in. And they also feel heard. Uh, the more people that you include and talk to, uh, the more heard your, your district and your city feel. So I think, uh, for me, the most important thing is to actually come out to the office, come out the house, get out there into the areas, meet the people and continue doing so, not just on the campaign trail, but like, even when you're in office for four years, you should be going around the, the neighborhoods and the areas that you're representing. And I'm talking to these people and even organizing, um, times and places where uh, your community can get together and voice their opinions and, and what they'd like to, uh, to have looked into. So, uh, that would be something that I would, I would really, uh, like to do with, uh, the constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Christian Scott. Up next, we have Mr. Greg Ritchie.
Thanks so much. This, so this question actually, um, just came up for me just, just yesterday. Um, actually, not too busy, and, um, it is pretty amazing. So, fifty years, um, I look back, my, my mom and dad, uh, my dad was the second licensed African-American Realtor in, uh, Slanta County. It's just amazing. We started to see how diversity has progressed and changed. Uh, he came here as an African-American pilot, where when he was a pilot, out of the eight Air Force bases. You're, you're wingman. Um, so it's amazing how far we came. You have to know where you come from. Um, I had a conversation a few days ago with a person who was too back ago, not wanting to grow more. Um, and the others comes in, and I knew exactly what he was talking about without talking about it. But he's never had to have the conversation with somebody that's six and four, three hundred pounds and black. And being on the campaign trail talking, um, my district's District Two. I had the probably highest propensity of people that are fifty-five and over, to which they've been with certain things in our country. Um, maybe back to civil rights, they've had a very interesting trip so far. And I know when I knock on that door, that person answers. They probably haven't seen someone like me in a long time. And I watched the walls come down. And that's equity inclusion. They realize that, you know what? Um, me being a strong, proud black man, they might have preconceived cons- cons- assumptions when I come up their door. And we just start talking. And about ninety-five percent of the time, they realize, you know, we have more in common than we do apart. And that's it. Uh, it's amazing to watch people go from being strong, you know, hands crossed and they start relaxing, realize, you know what? Me and that brother have a lot more in common. That's it. I mean, that's a real example of how equity inclusion works in real life, just getting out there and interacting in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Greg Ritchie. Up next, we have Mr. Tupac Chastain.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So, so this is a great question. It's a great statement. Um, so specifically, what, what would I do? There's, there's the example of what I would do as a city council member.
And we lost Mr. Tupac Chastain once again. Um, let's give it a few more seconds. And if we can't reach him again, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to Ms. Jeanette Wiley.
Salute.
Mr. Chastain, can you hear us?
Love some of it.
Okay. So in the meantime, we'll go ahead and move on with, uh, Ms. Jeanette Wiley. Uh, we'll come back to Mr. Tupac, uh, Tupac Chastain. Uh, so, uh, the mic is on you now.
Thank you. I think, um, it is very important to really be specific about making the changes that we need to do as far as diversity and inclusion, as I said. So it needs to be continual, specific and, um, dedicated direction to the staff and to all the people that we work with to look through the lens of how we are presenting information and how other people may perceive it. Um, because that's really important. And to that end, just simple things like on the front of the Parks and Rec Community Events thing, to have a variety of people, um, each time. So people will see, oh, that, these people look like me, or, you know, people can identify with that as well, to have our flyers in multiple languages. So it's not, uh, just letting people out because of certain languages. It was interesting, this past week, I got, uh, contacted from a group of Sikh members who live in District Six, and they wanted to meet with me in the park because I had seen them there before. So we set up a time, and I knew that language might be an issue, but we worked very hard, you know, they talk fast and I was struggling to hear. I talked fast and they were struggling to hear. So we both acknowledged that and tried to slow things down so we could communicate better with one another. Um, I think it's also important as far as hiring practices so that police, the fire, the staff at City Hall has very well represented. And it's very difficult sometime to find, um, you know, police officers that meet, are more of the minorities. And so, but in Vacaville, it's not necessarily much of a minority, um, but it's just that they are not always there. But I think just to be really mindful of diversity and inclusion and ways to better address that in Vacaville. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jeanette Wiley. I want to go back to check in with Mr. Tupac Chastain. I know we had a hard time hearing him last time he was on. So, Mr. Tupac Chastain, uh, let's go ahead and give it a second shot.
Oh, thank you much. I, I appreciate it. Uh, this is, this iPhone isn't really all that great. So, um, you know, I, I'd like, I'd like to go back to, to right after the pandemic started. Once again, going back to inclusiveness and, and allowing everybody to have a voice in the city. We, we had, uh, incidents that happened. We, we had incidents that happened in Vacaville involving the police here. One, one was where a police officer beat up a dog. One was a police officer beat up a special needs kid. And then the other ones were issues where, where individuals in the community were being harassed by the police. And they were calling into city council meetings. And they were expressing how frustrated they were with this treatment. And, and the city council meetings never had greater participation than at that time. And, and then it stopped. It stopped, people were complaining and people were allowed to have a voice. It was, it was, they were mostly young people that were being harassed in the community for speaking up in forums like city council meetings. If we're going to, if we're going to talk about inclusiveness and equity, we need to start by allowing people to have a voice to get, to, to get their feelings out there. What we did was we stopped those people from being allowed to communicate. I reached out to city council members and I was told that city council meetings would be overran with participation. And I said, it's not right for you to, to keep people from being able to speak up at city council meetings. This isn't right at all. This is, this is an issue that every city council member knows that they actually willingly participated in silencing the community from participating. I worked in the IT division at the city for twenty years. Granicus is the name of the system they use to be able to conduct those meetings. There's no technological reason for them stopping people whatsoever. That's what they originally tried to say, but that was not the case. When I reached out to city council members and said this was absolutely untrue, that's when I was, I was given the truth and told we, we had to stop participation because it was too good, essentially. So, so yeah, this, this is definitely an issue in our community. Anybody not acknowledging that and that our community is being silenced is completely full of it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tepak Justin.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and turn it to you. Thank you once again, Mr. Ryan Rucker, for that question.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan, for that question. So next, we're going to have a question by Ms. Ashley Banta. And this question is on homelessness. Ashley?
Hi, my name is Ashley Banta and I have lived in the city of Vacaville for the last four years with my family of four children. In fact, I'm at fifth grade music pickup right now. So I might have to leave when my daughter gets to the front of the line. I also work at Opportunity House with Vacaville Solana Services Corporation and am a big advocate for people with lived experience of homelessness, substance abuse, mental health, domestic violence, and all of the things that lead to homelessness. My question today is, what do you believe the status of homelessness is in Vacaville? And in your district, where is this issue in your list of priorities for the city council and why? And what are your three policy proposals that would be aimed at preventing and addressing homelessness in our city? Thank you.
Wow, did you guys get all of that? Okay, the first up is Christian Scott from running, running in District Four.
So, gosh, you know, where is homelessness on my list of priorities? It's number one for me. I've been working in the homeless community for about a decade here in Vacaville and especially in District Four and also out by Andrews Park. You know, I've gotten to know pretty much everybody in the community, what their stories are, what their needs are, what kind of problems that they're dealing with and what they're willing to do and, and what they would not be willing to do as far as, you know, some, some sort of a plan that would help them out. And over those ten years, I found that really what needed to happen is since we weren't able to successfully implant any sort of a shelter or center for rehabilitation in the city limits, it got shut down like four times. So I've been looking just outside the city limits and I found a large tract of ninety acres that has forty acres of gradable land that we can build on. We've got tiny homes, we've got cooling, warming buildings. There's a myriad of volunteers from, from all different areas, from medical, from substance abuse, from mental health, barbers, contractors, you name it. And many of the homeless that I have interviewed about this also have skill sets. They want to invest in a community in a place where they're not going to be arrested for illegal camping. And they're not going to be sent to Fairfield to recite and release to just try to get back home. I think that for me, that's number one. That's, that's my big issue. And I believe that we can solve homelessness inside of two years. Thanks.
Next on the list to answer this question is Greg Ritchie from District Two.
That was a very great answer, Christian. I guess first and foremost, it's hard for me to really say where, number one, number two priority in, in my, my personal belief, it's something that's hard, it's hard to prioritize. These, these are people. And I, to me, it's, I don't know how to prioritize it, but it's something that they absolutely have to resolve and solve. It, it's been interesting since I've been on council with, we had a cooling station, the warming stations. And I tried to jump right into the fire with, with the conversation. I've learned a lot so far about how as a city, we have, it's a bigger problem than I ever imagined. And it just, it's not something that can go away. And I think we're moving in the right direction where it, this is something where it cannot be addressed. At like District Two, it's not a D-two thing, it's not a D-four thing. It's a Vaca problem. So for me to try to say, oh, my district doesn't have homeless, I'm okay with that, that, that would be horrible. I have to look at the city of Vacaville and find ways to, we need to collaborate with the county. And we need to make sure that we don't just Dixon brings people to Vacaville, Vacaville dumps in Fairfield. But they'll, because people on bus with vouchers to Vacaville. It's a, we can't play this game. We have to work together and acknowledge it and address the elephant in the room and find ways to get to the root cause. If it's, if they need to have help with medication, get off substances. They're trying to find ways to cope with things with illegal drugs. We need to make sure we do the right thing to treat the problem, not just patch it up and move it to over here. So it's just tough. I, I'm honestly admitting that it's a work in progress. But I do identify that it's mental health is a lot of it. We need to make sure that they have the opportunity to thrive and go up and not just get pushed over. So that's my, that's my question or my response.
Okay, I'm going to give Mr. Tepak Justin a chance to respond to that question. Unmute yourself and give us an answer.
Excellent. Yeah, there, there's a delay in the unmute. So can you hear me okay?
Well, we were.
I'm assuming that you can hear me all right. So, so, so that's a great question, Ashley. So, so I have a question. I know it's not rhetorical this way, but my, my question back is, if houses only costed five dollars, would there be an issue with homeless? I, I imagine that if, if houses were more affordable, then we wouldn't have as much of an issue with homeless and with housing and, you know, the housing that we do. So when you're building houses that cost somewhere in the range of six hundred thousand to seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars, you're going to have rent that is completely ridiculous and that nobody can afford. And if you are a person living on the street, the, the, the thought of obtaining a seven hundred thousand dollar house is going to be impossible. So I mean, where, where do you go from there? What we need is affordable housing. We need realistic and practical housing is what we need. This is an issue that we had in the eighties here in this area. The city manager at the time decided, put in the Orange Drive Auto, Auto Center complex, the Nut Tree, Nut, the Nut Tree Shopping Center, the, 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 the Factory Outlet Stores. These were all done to be able to raise enough sales tax so that we could build more realistic sized houses in this town so that peoples could actually have, be, have a chance at living in the town that they grew up in. This was all forethought about. And what's happened since then is these people since retired out and then the peoples, the new peoples that come in, they're making two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. In order to pay for that pension, you're going to have to sell an eight hundred thousand dollar house. What we're doing is drawing in people from the Bay Area, creating more congestion on the streets, paying for larger pensions and outpricing the people who used to live here. So we do have a serious housing problem. Nobody's going to get right to the punch and talk about it. Everybody has a lot of political, kind of political ease discussion about it. It's a bunch of garbage. What we need to do is start building houses responsibly is what we need to do. I thank you for your question.
Thank you for your response. Next is Jeanette Wiley.
I do think homelessness is an issue in Vacaville, but not just in Vacaville, not just in Solana County, but California and other states as well. I do think that we need to bring back the CREW program, which is through the police department. I did ride along with them one morning on their tour around town. And really, I was pleased by the way they treated most of the people with respect and tried to get services for them. I think that paying for those shelter beds, it, it was nice to have those as a backup. But a lot of people didn't want to go to the shelter beds because it was in Fairfield rather than here in Vacaville. One priority is for help during the extremes, like extreme cold, extreme heat. And identifying help through that county program. There was, you know, a psychologist that would come or a doctor that would come would help with making sure people were on their meds. So in my district specifically, there was an area kind of behind Nut Tree in Alamo where it's not, it's not kept up. There's, it's open in the, in the evening. And so people have been kind of hunkered down there. And then there have been some thefts in the area. And so I think if we look at those places and people that need help, we should be able to try to provide those support and resources. So I think the navigation center that we approved last night is a step in the right direction. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeanette. And finally, we have Sarah Chapman to respond to that question. Unmute yourself.
Thank you. According to, there were several components to this question. I'm going to go one, take it step by step. Homelessness, do I believe it's, what, what do I believe is the status of homelessness in Vacaville? And in my district, we have a problem with the unsheltered in Vacaville. In District Four, we have a high number of individuals that are unsheltered. Where is the issue in my list of priorities? It is a number one, it, it is a high priority. And why? Everyone should have and is entitled to have a safe place to reside. We find that our homeless are homeless for various reasons. It's not just one or two. It's, there are several. With that, what I can see is creating a collaborative network. Bring, bring our community. I know there's the Community Resource Center. I know Fairfield has the shelter. We have Opportunity House. And each of them are providing mental health assistance, substance abuse assistance, assistance for our veterans that are, that have found themselves on the street. And then those that are unhoused because they fell upon hard times. We're trying to service all of them. And I probably omitted someone who is, who is unsheltered at this time. With the, with the collaboration and the sharing of resources and the city is contributing monetarily to each of these networks or these nonprofits that I mentioned. However, we here in Vacaville, I do feel that there should be a way that we can provide shelter for these individuals. Of course, we, and for those who found themselves on hard times, a transitional program for them, to help them get back on their feet. So that is my status, my position on addressing the issue of homelessness here in Vacaville.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that question, Ashley. And I will move on to Sergio with the next question.
Thank you, Alice. All right. So up next, we have Ms. Sarah Barnes. She's going to share with us a district-specific question. So what this means is that this question will be, you know, answers will vary depending on where the candidates are running in. Sarah, if you'd like, go ahead and introduce yourself. And once you are done, you may present your question.
Sergio, it looks like we may have lost her. Do you want to move on to the next question?
Sure. In the meantime, yeah, we'll just go ahead and Alice, would you like to introduce one?
Oh, yeah.
Actually, Sergio, if you wanted to just ask the question and we can just go on from there. And if Sarah rejoins, then we can have her rejoin.
Sounds great. Yeah, be happy to do that. All right. So Sarah's question is, what do you see as the most prevalent issues in your district today? What have you accomplished thus far in resolving the issues? And what are your plans to address them if you are elected? Please state your district. Okay. So that is Ms. Sarah's question. We're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Greg Ritchie, who is from District Two.
All right. Wow, most prevailing issue in my district, so my district, District Two. My, the biggest issue is, gosh, was it a hundred and, is a hundred and nine acres? I think it's a Green Tree Golf Course. That is the biggest issue. It's a golf course that went dormant and has sad as eyesore and blight in the heart of District Two for a long time. And there's been a lot of feelings of loss of white people bought their house, have this, the retirement and to live their dream of retirement out in the community. So it's been a lot of education on private property rights and kind of misrepresentation on developers, this, that, on the way to buy the property. The biggest issue of my, in my community is that talking with the residents at different liaison meetings is really trying to bring them together has been the biggest task in my district to make sure that they have an equitable and their voice heard to be expressed in the design development of the largest piece of land that needs to be developed in the community and make sure that they are protected as a protected class and feel comfortable to live out their lives as they should and deserve. Really, it's just being there to be a voice and have them feel like they're being heard. So what's interesting is that fifty-five and over crowd and so, and it somewhat resembles a lot of minorities, which they really aren't. But they resemble a lot of minorities, just feel like their voice isn't being heard and they want someone to be there for them. So it's, it's amazing how the dynamic is. But I'm trying to my best to make sure that their voices have been heard in the design and the touch and feel of what goes on in District Two and the develop, oh, time's up, sorry.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Greg Ritchie. Up next, we have Mr. Tepak Justin from District Six.
Can you please repeat the question?
Absolutely. The question is, what do you see as the most prevalent issues in your district today? What have you accomplished thus far in resolving the issues? And what are your plans to address them if you are elected? Please state your district.
Great question. One, one of the most pressing issues that we're facing in our area today is overcrowding. Overcrowding of the roadways, overcrowding of the schools and, and, and buildings that is taking place without having the infrastructure in to support the overcrowding that we're putting on that infrastructure. The road, the roadways on Vanden Road is absolutely horribly dangerous. Anybody who's driving from this part of town into Fairfield, which there are tons of cars that drive Vanden Road every day, it, it's, it's, it's a nightmare. It's dangerous. It's a death trap. There are tons of accidents that happen out there. That roadway should have been taken care of before we put in the houses. It should have been taken care of before we started building the houses here and making that a major connection point between our city and our neighboring city. So one of the largest issues that we're facing is putting the cart before the horse. Selling houses before we have any idea what kind of impact that kind of population density is going to make on the area. We put kids on the floors in the schools. And then we don't get together with the schools and collaborate with the schools until we have people that are upset that their kids are sitting on the floors. So we talked about Measure M. Measure M is something that's new on the ballot, too. It's something, it's a school initiative for, for this area in town. And, and it's an important one. It's one that they don't have a plan on how they're going to spend the money. So it's also, it's dangerous if we don't do it. And it's also very scary if we do vote it through. It's very, very serious, serious stuff going on with us, overpopulating this area and not being able to handle the population. What have I done? Well, there's not a lot. Well, there's not a lot that a citizen can do. You can reach out to your city council, but if you don't have any kind of response from them or you're not getting any any results from them, then what you do is you run for city council and you actually make the change that you want to see and that you're hearing from the community overwhelmingly. Simple, simple changes, guys. Simple, simple stuff. Traffic engineering is something we've been doing very, very long time. And we have a whole committed team of traffic engineers.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tapachas Stain. Up next, we have Ms. Jeanette Wiley from District Six.
Well, along a very similar vein, I think the development is one of the biggest issues facing District Six. And one of the reasons why I ran in the first place because I felt like they were putting more and more houses down here without any consideration to the amount of traffic that was being generated. Most of the houses that are going in now were um approved by councils like in two thousand and six, two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten. And they're not things that we have just recently approved. There is traffic specifically around Leisure Town and Vanden. And um the reason things are not improved first is the developments have to help pay for that. And so it is very dangerous. Some parts wide, some part is not uh had been widened yet. And the roundabout was designed by traffic engineers, but I think without consideration of the amount of speed that people go. So we need more appropriate signs on the roundabouts and the speed control. Um, it's really dangerous also in that there aren't crosswalks among the streets. And the end of Nut Tree is like a forty-five mile zone, which is in town, close to the park. And people go like forty-five, fifty, and they don't, and it's a wide street for people to cross. I have talked with a lot of residents and the city about getting a crosswalk in or stop signs. And there's always has to be a traffic study or something to justify that. People have also asked for speed bumps, but the speed bumps get uh asked by the fire firemen and police because they, it really slows their response time if they have to slow to go over a speed bump. So those are issues that I think are problems. Um, and just the fact that people do like the donuts at many, many times of the day. So I think an increased police presence is what we have asked for and just really studying the traffic effects. We did last night vote down a um an apartment complex in that area because of traffic concerns.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jeanette Wiley. Up next, we have Ms. Sarah Chapman from District Four.
So mute.
Okay. Um, what I see is the most prevalent issue in the district, I'm going to say is crime. Now, I don't want people to think that District Four is, I mean, you can't come and visit or live or reside there. However, we have our 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 amount of crime. And crime is crime, but it's not a violent crime. Where, you know, it may be breaking into vehicles, but still it's a criminal act. I see um and what are my plans to address this? It is not something that I personally can address. However, there are things that need to be done in the city to address these issues. And I'm willing to keep it on the table. I've, since I've been walking the communities and throughout the years, District Four does not have many pathways. There is a commu- uh section of District Four. Uh, I had a resident recently tell me that she cannot go out and take a walk in the evening like she desires because there are, there's no, no place for her to walk, walk alone. And she had mentioned, why couldn't they use Will Stee Wood? I said, well, that's not the city. That's the school district. And maybe there is a way we can collaborate with the school district to assist us in providing for some of these resources or some of these needs that are that are needed in District Four. District Four lacks the parks, which have been, which I've mentioned several times. They lack the, lack the parks and recreation for the young people. And because of that, that might be contributing to what uh the minor, what I call the minor crime, but some of the criminal acts that are taking place. So uh what I see is providing more amenities for the people of District Four. And um I think that will assist in declining the crime rate.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah Chapman. And up next, we have Mr. Christian Scott from District Four.
So I would say that uh for District Four, really, uh for me, the the top uh priority on that, of of course, is homelessness. Um, everywhere you go in District Four, you see people um laid out or seeking shade or just with all of their uh belongings on the sidewalk. And um there's mental illness at work there and drug and alcohol addiction. Um, also, the creek, you know, as far as providing like walking areas and and things like that. Um, the Creek Walk is supposed to be a wonderful piece of land that we are preserving and and making an enjoyable, charming part of of our city. And it just um, it needs more maintenance. It needs uh funding for that maintenance. We need to really take it seriously and take care of that. And there is crime. There is prostitution in District Four. Um, not that much, there's three. Um, and I think that that is a thing that can be solved, too, with um not necessarily just policing it out of existence, but you know, um approaching, having relationship, getting services involved, figuring out what the problems are that are causing that. And um, you know, as far as what I've been doing, I have uh put together a team. We go out, we patrol the neighborhoods at night. I put together some other teams. We go out and uh serve the homeless and figure out where they're at and and get them connected to um to services and places that they can go that's existing already. Um, I think continuing to just engage in that and not policing it as an answer, but actually turning towards the problems and getting personally involved and having a relationship uh with the people that are affected is key. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Christian Scott. Alice, I'm going to go ahead and turn it to you to introduce Ms. Wendy Brecken.
Yes, our next question has to deal with fiscal responsibility. And we have Wendy Brecken to ask that question.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Wendy Brecken. I've served on the Vacaville Planning Commission. I've been active in the community for a number of years. My question tonight for you is about unfunded liabilities. Um, City of Vacaville's unfunded liabilities. Tens of millions of dollars have gone towards our current annual retiree healthcare funds and pension payments. In addition, we have debt owed to the state of California. As of March twenty twenty-one, the City of Vacaville had total unfunded liabilities or debt of three hundred and twenty million. This is very high in comparison to other cities. And Vacaville's payment to retiree healthcare and pension debt drains the city of needed funds for the community, which is what we've all been talking about. For other post-employment benefits or OPEB, there the, that's the retiree medical care. The unfunded liability is seventy-eight point two million. Few of any other cities have lifetime healthcare for their employees due to that cost. Two grand juries have issued reports about this issue. And an advisory committee has, was formed in order to give council staff reasonable options to reduce costs. Although the city has taken some steps to reduce the unfunded liabilities, the issue persists. So in order for the fiscal health of Vacaville to improve, more needs to be done. As a city council member, what steps do you feel should be taken to address this issue? Thank you.
Thanks for the question. And the first candidate who gets to respond to that is Greg Ritchie from District Two.
I thank Wendy for the question. Um, yeah, that's, you know, it's amazing. Um, we're we're very interesting situation. We are um uh, we had a round negotiations ended quite some time ago. And we're currently negotiating with a certain group right now. Um, we're in a weird time in in our country and trying to first that we've acknowledged what the debt we have, the current position we're at and where we are, we are at right now. We are, we we are on the heels of Federal Reserve just announcing that we are in a forty-year high inflation. And they're not taking a foot of the pedal until twenty twenty-four. Um, they went on the record and said Americans, America, they'd be ready to feel pain. So so it it's not an assumption. It is the person with the finger on the button. Um, I'm very dialed in. I I love finance and and I understand very closely the OPEB, OPEB Trust. One of the things we did, so I guess in my two minutes, I try to take it back. Like I can talk for hours about this stuff. Um, we got in a situation, we didn't just wake up with a hangover and have a quarter billion dollars of debt. And that's why I really need to emphasize. And I know, Wendy, you've been a passionate person um since I I've known you through my time watching you on the commission to see you at the Shabbat. Uh, um, but uh we didn't get here overnight. So we can't, we're not gonna solve overnight. Like, that's the first and foremost we have to understand. But we need to hit the comfortable, comfortable steps to make sure that we do the OPEB Trust. We add in an accelerator by having additional funds that have been added to reduce a portion of it. So the OPEB Trust is going to reduce the kind of medical um expense portion of our our debt. Um, we need to make sure that when we have the good years, we help pay down faster. We're like, which we did. Um, i- it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge. Um, I don't know how many cities in California do the CalPRA system have lifetime benefits. Um, but I know that we look at Sloma County, maybe we are um one of the last. But I certainly know throughout California, oh, sorry, time's up.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Mr. Tapak Chastain. Unmute yourself, Barry. We can't hear you.
Excellent. Excellent, excellent. Thank you. I I hope you can. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, great. Thank you. So so this is, and you know, I'm I'm going to go circle back to the the last question and end that off, too, by saying this. The the city council and the mayor advise city staff on on their direction that they're going to go. So the city staff and and city manager simply do what they're told. And if they're not, if they're not being told what to do, they're going to do what they feel they should do. That being crosswalks, building houses, whatever it is. Last night's council meeting was a great example of that. They were warned by the city attorney, hey, you're doing something that's potentially going to get us in a lawsuit. City council got together and said, we're going to do the right thing and keep our promise up for the community. And they're going to have to fight for that. They're going to have to figure out how how to actually make that happen and come together. So the way they actually direct the staff is by collaborating, getting together, making a vote and pointing them in the direction that's best for the community. But they got to come together to do that. And that's what hasn't been happening. So if we go back to the the fiscal budget of this coming up year, Ken Matsusuma, he was providing the um the presentation on this coming up year's budget. And he snuck in there right at the end of it. He said, we're going to use Measure M funds for paying down pensions. Is is what he put in there? More quick.
You're freezing.
More.
We're having trouble, trouble uh hearing Mr. Um, Chastain. Should we just move on and come back to him again for this?
Ye- yes, he had about thirty seconds left, so we can come back to him maybe once he reconnects.
All right. So Mr. Chastain, we can't hear you, so try to get back in. Are you there now?
Yes, I am. Are you there?
No, we missed, we missed half of what you said, the last few sentences here. Can you continue, though? Hello?
That's really unfortunate. Let me um, I'm not sure what's going.
Okay, we're going to come back to you. We're going to move on and come back to you, see if you can get your your system working better. Okay, next up is Jeanette Wiley.
All right, um, I do believe fiscal responsibility is very important and it should be one of the guiding principles that we have. I do think that the unfunded liability has been a a big issue. And in the last year or year and a half, we have been addressing it. And I think it hurts and kind of made a difference faster than than we thought. So I do feel like that it's moving in the right direction. I don't think that a lifetime medical is reasonable. Um, years ago, when I was teaching, you know, that was the thing that everyone was striving for, but it really is not a reasonable thing for the city or the school district to provide. So I think one of the changes would be that when people reach Medicare age eligibility, that they should be required to go to uh Medicare because it's costing the city so much for the employee and the spouse and whoever else is on that plan to be there. Um, so I think that also changing to the tier three that cut out the lifetime medical made a big difference. And we are seeing fewer and fewer people being on that. And with early retirements, you know, people don't, police and fire don't usually go until sixty-five and um, but it does, since it's, and some of them have a lifetime medical, that's what's killing us. So going forward, we are trying to make that change so that people do not have that kind of a the the plan. So I have been on healthcare committees for twenty years through the district, and it is such a difficult position. But you have to really guard against paying too much in unfunded liabilities and having those build up with all of your staff. So it's a, it's an important problem to address, and we are working to address it.
Thank you, Jeanette. Uh, Mr. Tapak, if you will, you have thirty seconds left, and you can take them right now. Finish up your statement on this. Hello, can you? Unmute yourself.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hello? I'm I'm on mute. Okay, excellent. So so, yeah, and and when we, and when we stop actually providing those benefits is when we we started to become less competitive with surrounding communities, putting us in the situation that we have now with with the fire having brownouts. So not not only do we need to fix that, fix the issue with us actually paying these pensions, but we need to come up with creative solutions that actually make us an attractive place for people to want to work. Um, I provided a few ideas to the to the fire, the Fire Association when they were looking for for endorsees. I learned I wasn't looking for money, but I do have solutions. And and what the greatest solution I could write to them is is a housing option um so that we can entice people to want to work here and live here at the same time and and get around that high interest rate. There's a million different things we can do that make us an attractive place for people to come work at and not have those really high pensions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And sorry you're having such a problem with your your um, your your audio. The next to respond to that question is Sarah Chapman. Unmute yourself.
Okay. I'm muted. All right, thank you. This unfunded liability has been going on for many, many, many years. It didn't just happen yesterday. Um, the situation with the pension funds, um, it's it's a problem not only here in Vacaville. How if it it wasn't a problem only here in Vacaville. It is, it's in many governmental organizations, entities. Um, what I see here in Vacaville is the full funding of benefits. That is very unusual and and we may be the very last to be addressing this. What I see as being needed is to bring the employees, everyone together. Bring representatives to the table. Let them understand, inform, educate, because the dis- the city council cannot uh solve this problem alone. It's going to take many ideas that the grand jury uh and the advisory uh uh committee, they have, uh, the committee has come up with many steps, many things have been done to bring down or to uh put, put some money against the liability. But it's going to take much more. So uh additional brainstorming um needs to be done. And like um had previously been mentioned, Medicare, if people, when they become of age, change over, that would be a great aid, a great assistance to the That would be a great aid, a great assistance to the situation. Not only that, when we, no, I'm getting to go off into left field, my mind is so full of stuff, however. We want to sustain our budget, we want to, and we want to do more for the people of Vacaville. But we can't do that as long as we have this unfunded liability that we have to put money into, to bring it down. So it's gonna take some out of the box thinking and everyone is gonna have to come to the table, we're gonna have to work with the unions. And my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Christian Scott.
So I, I think that, um, yes, of course, we need to, to modify the, the lifetime pensions. Uh, with, with the benefits, um, but as I look at the budget, I see that there are. Um, that there are items where we spend millions of dollars and we don't really do any good there. It's not giving us the mileage that millions of dollars should. And I think that if we seek alternative, uh, means to solve those issues, we can get it done for far less. I had come to one of the city council meetings and they were talking about spending seven million dollars on homelessness. And I looked at that and I thought for a tenth of that, we can solve homelessness. You know, and, and not in a yearly payment, but just a one time. And so I, I look at that and I look at, um, hiring more police to solve the problem of, of homelessness. Um, when you hire more police, then you hire more pensions and more benefits and it's super costly. So I think that really what we need to do is we need to look at each of these, each of these line items, each of these things in the budget. And find better, cheaper, more effective and efficient ways of handling those issues. Uh, I see that we're hiring people of, you know, to come and, and give us their opinion for hundreds of thousands of dollars, for half a million dollars. And so haven't done nothing yet, and I feel like if you're gonna spend half a million dollars, why not spend it on something that's gonna actually maybe solve the problem? Rather than just get lost with millions of dollars and endless debate and never really make a move. Um, I think that taking a critical eye to the budget in this way, we can shave off millions and we can sock away. At that debt and we can erase it, maybe in five years, if we do this right. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody, for responding to Wendy Brecken's question, and thank you, Wendy, for the question.
Right on, thank you, Alice. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Ms. Ayesha Gutierrez. Uh, she's going to be speaking on behalf of minorities and small businesses. Um, Ayesha, feel free to introduce yourself and once you are done, uh, please feel free to share your question with the rest of us here. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the introduction. Uh, my name is Ayesha Gutierrez. I am a lifelong resident of, uh, Vacaville, appreciate everyone for having me here. Um, I am a member of the Equity Task Force with the, uh, Vacaville Unified School District. My board member, uh, with VPEF, which is the Vacaville Public Education Foundation. I'm a Parks and Rec Commissioner serving District Two along with, uh, Mr. Greg Ritchie there as well. Um, I'm also got a little side business, um, in town as well, and I'm a parent and grandparent, um, as well. So my question is, um, the New York Times recently reported that black and other minority owned businesses. Were disproportionately underserved by small business relief efforts. Often because they lack the connections to get access to the aid or were rejected because of some of the program's rules. What would you do to support small businesses still struggling after COVID? Specifically even minority owned businesses and ensuring that there's outreach beyond the traditional small business. Um, communication channels, we're still hearing from some of the, um, minority owned small businesses that never received. Um, anyone reaching out to them during COVID and during the pandemic. Um, and I'm just curious of what your response would be to make sure that, um, the outreach is there and to assist those, um, community members.
Thank you, Ayesha. First on my list is Mr. Tepak Chastain.
Did we lose him?
Didn't we still have him on the meeting?
He's muted and, and his picture is, and his picture is gone also, so maybe we can hear him if he'd unmute himself.
Myself, I, I mute myself and I can see.
Okay.
I haven't changed anything. Okay, so, so that, that's a great question. We, um, dur- during the pandemic, when we were, when we were given cares money and, and funds to be able to help businesses out. We, we end up spending a good portion of that money on updating city software for, for the, um, for the planning department. And it was, there was a really frustrating thing to hear. We, we, we didn't do anything for outdoor dining, we did, we used the portion of the money to support the city and not the businesses. And, and, and small businesses struggled during that time, they really struggled during that time and like you say, they're, they're still struggling. What, what I would do is I would, I would point economic development in the direction of supporting small businesses. Right now, economic development's only interested in supporting Goliath large business coming into the city. And what they fail to realize is how important sales tax is for our city. It's not gonna bring sales tax in, having this super biomedical facility and this research facility. It's gonna bring in a little bit of income and create a few jobs, but the jobs that we already have here are the ones that we should be focusing on and supporting. And, and helping out with the small businesses, I mean, we need to really.
Uh-oh. We lost you again.
Yeah, having trouble hearing him. Let's give it a few more seconds because it sounds like he was about to wrap it up, but if we don't hear back from him, we'll go ahead and.
At the end, we'll come back and give him his fifteen, thirty seconds afterwards.
Yep, exactly right. In the meantime, uh, let's go ahead and move on with, uh, Ms. Jeanette Wiley. Ms. Jeanette, if you can please unmute yourself, uh, we'll go back to Tepak when, you know, he, he reconnects.
Thank you. I do feel like that it's very important to support minority businesses, small businesses. And that is an area where we can certainly improve in Vacaville. We have a program that this shop locally and they've been working on it for a while. And it just hasn't seemed to caught on, they did have a report this week and said, you know, we are working on the shop local again. Um, so I also had said in my notes that we needed to work with economic development and have that be one of their focuses as well. Because I don't think it is as much. We do have, uh, a black chamber commerce and Latino chamber commerce, I think we need to really work closely with them. And they have been very successful, but I don't think they should just work with minorities, we need to all work together, but I want, they want to focus on that. I have noticed that in quite a few of the vendor fairs we've had, we've had a lot of black or minority businesses. And I wanna get beyond that, I want to support the business, not just as a vendor. But I am happy to see that we have quite a few, um, that are coming to our, our vendor fairs. I think that's working in the right direction. So highlight community awareness, have them on the, you know, a part on our Vacaville Facebook page. Here's some Vacaville businesses you should, you should visit. Visit Vacaville gave a report last night, they had an art, um, an art trail, they had a taco trail. We could have a small business trail, you know, so then people could go look at small businesses that they may not know about. Uh, when we had that art and wine stroll the other night, I was there and I went to some businesses that I had never walked in before. So those sorts of things to highlight the businesses that we do have and to support them. So their businesses for more than, you know, a year and a half and then things get rough and so then they can't, they can't do it anymore. So I support small business and, um, want to see us continue to highlight their fair, uh, place in our community. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jeanette Wiley. I wanna go back to Mr. Tepak Chastain, just check in with him. Uh, Mr. Tepak, if you can hear me, uh, please go ahead and unmute yourself. I believe you have a few seconds left. Not hearing back from him, so we'll check in with him later. In the meantime, we're gonna move on. Uh, Ms. Sarah Chapman, uh, you are now up.
Thank you. Economists, uh, continued to, uh, mention how small businesses are the backbone of, of society. Following the pandemic, where we're aware that many of our small businesses had to close, shut their doors and, uh, were not able to reopen them. Even today, as a small business, they are required, they still have to, uh, many hoops to go through. The door of funding that was being provided to, uh, small businesses. I recall, not I recall, but I assisted a couple of individuals who did not understand all the legal. Uh, ramifications involved in acquiring any of the funds that have been made available. Um, it, it took some, it took some understanding. What I feel, uh, could and what I would do as a councilperson. Would make it a point to connect with the small business owners if it requires visiting each one individually. Each of their needs, again, according to, same as with an individual, are different. Each of their needs may be different. And then having the resources or a database to direct them would be something that would, that would be beneficial to, to a small business owner. So I think it's very important, uh, to connect with the, uh, with the small business owner. And provide assistance and resources for them to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah Chapman. Up next, we have Mr. Christian Scott.
So as a, a small business owner, um, I remember when that funding became available and it was very confusing. And you could try to go to a bank and they would maybe help walk you through the process. I feel like if, and especially if we're, if we're gonna try to target, uh, minority owned businesses. Then what we need to do is, is attack it the most efficient way. And I feel like if we have a, a job fair kind of format workshop. Where there are people available to answer all the questions, to, uh, you know, have a sort of a pop-up. Where they can run through the numbers with you, see that you qualify, explain what it's about. And I think also, uh, we need to have a database where we can send information directly to those businesses. And say, listen, here is what's available, here are the timeframes, here's what you would need to do. We're available at this number, you can make an appointment, we can come and talk to you, you can come see us. I think that, um, that attacking it in that way is going to take the, the guesswork out of it. And the feeling of hopelessness that comes from all the red tape that is involved in that. If you have an actual face, an actual person who is making contact, having relationship and saying, we'll help you walk through this. Uh, not as a financial institution that's gonna make money off you, but this is as a service. Because our small businesses, really, that is the culture of our city. And when we just have these big, uh, brand name stores come in, the Walmarts and the, and the Targets and all this. That is killing the mom and pops and we lose the culture of our city. Those, uh, those small businesses, those are the people in our community. Um, and I've seen it in plenty of different cities, these big chain stores come in, the mom and pops shut down. And before you know it, it dries up and the only thing left is the big chain store.
All right, thank you, Mr. Christian Scott, and last but not least, Mr. Greg Ritchie.
So this is right for me, I'll, I'll try to be, uh, try my way to get everything in two minutes. Yeah, I, I really respect, appreciate Ayesha Gutierrez for also being a fellow small business owner. This is, it's something to me I'm very passionate about, um, I own a small business. Um, but you know, I, I'm a minority, a minority, a minority. Um, in nicest America, only one point five percent of all people that, that look like me are mortgage professional. So I'm the one percent. I am also in Vacaville, I'm like, I'm like a point something. Um, I own a black, I have a black own mortgage company, the largest in the city, largest in the county. It's, it's, it's hard. What I really, I look back at this, it's not about PvP, it, I, if I blow the question, I don't really care. It's like, it, it's more of, I know, we need entrepreneurial spirits in education, financial literacy to be taught in our schools. Um, financial literacy and education entrepreneurial spirit is not in a scribe status. I mean, it's not, it's not, you have, you're taught it, you're not just given the ability to start a business. He'll pass it down to their kids and their kids understand through education information. We need to make sure that minorities have access to understanding how to be financially literate and how start a company. What are the steps you need to take, what doors do you walk through to allow yourself, you put in position to be empowered? Both, it, it's physically, mentally, you have to be able to run a business. It's a lot of work, you have to understand the doors and the traps and what to ask and not ask and where to go. If you, if you spend be forty-two and have a pandemic throwing you and know what to do, it's too late. We gotta start early, I'm telling you, like, I know my time's almost up, but if I can't empower anything is, we need to start young. We need to make sure people look like me and us, understand what it takes to succeed this country. And find a way to navigate through all of the traps.
Thank you, Greg. Unfortunately, we don't have Mr. Tepak Chastain with us anymore. All right, well, we do appreciate, uh, we do appreciate that question, Ms. Alice, uh, thank you so much. Um, we do have one last question, uh, but for this question, we're only gonna give y'all thirty seconds to answer. Uh, so it's gonna be a, a little more tight on time. Uh, but each candidate will be given thirty seconds to summarize why they're running for office here in Vacaville. Uh, as well as what their qualifications are and, uh, they may provide a closing statement, uh, if they'd like as well. So we're gonna go ahead and.
A statement to close.
State.
Thirty seconds.
So we're going ahead, go ahead and start with, uh, Ms. Jeanette Wiley from District Six.
Thank you very much to the Vacaville People's Forum for organizing this forum tonight. And for all the other special events that you, that you have organized, I think is very important to the community. I am running to continue the work that I began. I have a lot of great support for the work that I have completed. I realized that change is slow, um, so I didn't get much done during the two years. I, so that's why I'm running for the four-year seat and I am running because I think I'm the best person for the job, so it's Wiley for the win. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Sarah Chapman, you are now up from District Four.
I will be the representative that listens and responds and respond. I wanna continue what has already been started by, uh, the present council. I have, uh, I'm known as an avid advocate for the people, I'm respectful of diverse opinions, approachable, compassionate, trustworthy and a good listener. I am data-driven and make decisions based on facts and what is in the best interest of not a few, but the majority. Please vote for Sarah Chapman on November the eighth.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah Chapman. Up next, we have Mr. Christian Scott from District Four.
Uh, yes, I, I'm running because I want to provide a solution to homelessness, uh, immediately. And I also want to see our budget spent properly. Um, I think that we can do more, I think that we can do better and I am wanting to be the change that I would like to see. And so on November eighth, I would really appreciate your vote and we'll get to work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Christian Scott. Up next, Mr. Greg Ritchie from District Two.
I, um, I'm rerunning, uh, like, like Jeanette Wiley had a short term. I wanna rerun for District, District Two, um, it's all about stepping up to be the change. I wanna make sure that I'm forced to reckon with and make sure that people that can look and see the council and see a mirror image of what they could be or become. I think it's very important to have a strong minorities on the council and I'm very opinionated. Um, confident, maybe too confident sometimes, but it, it needs to happen. We need to make sure that we have a council resembles the people and has the ability to go forward and feel they have a voice to reckon with. I'm not scared to take on pretty crazy and tough conversations with people and I think they need to have that throughout day-to-day of going to community. And I see people look at me in a very positive way as an opportunity and. Actual physical example, what can happen in a city, um, city change a lot. And I just gonna keep going right direction and be here to make sure it does. City changed a lot, and I just keep going right direction. I'm gonna be here to make sure it does. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Greg Ritchie. Unfortunately, we did try to reach Mr. Tupac Chastain, but we couldn't reach him. We tried calling his phone, tried to get him back before the end of the last question in closing. But we're gonna go ahead and move on. I'll pass the mic to Ms. Alice. But I do want to say thank you from my behalf to all the candidates that were here to, to, you know, speak their truth. I also want to thank all the community members that were here to share their questions, representing the people of Vacaville. I think it was a very great forum. So thank you.
Yes, I want to, to reiterate, reiterate that thank you to the candidates, all of you for showing up tonight. It's very important that in an election year, and it's more important for local candidates to reach out to the communities in which they serve because local politicians affect our day-to-day. And it's, it's, uh, almost ecstatic that you all were here tonight to present your, your ideas and, and your, your desire to serve the community of Vacaville. So thank you very, very much for attending. And thanks to all of you in the audience for showing up to hear what the candidates have to say. Because you have to cast a vote, and we wanted to make sure that you cast an informed vote. We're not free unless we can make choices. And what the Vacaville People's Forum has done here tonight is to make sure that you are aware of the choices you have in casting your vote. This video will be available on Facebook. And I wanted to remind you to please like the page on Facebook so that the updates on the video can be around for a long time. Also, a reminder that we have the Mayor's Forum tomorrow evening at six PM again on Facebook Live. And next week, the Vacaville Unified School District and the Travis Unified School, School Board candidates on October fourth and October sixth, respectively. We hope you can join us again for, for those remaining forums. Remember, casting an informed vote means that you're not only protecting your community, but you're up, you're upholding the tenets of our democracy. You're keeping our democracy alive, working for us all. So thanks again to everybody for the candidates for participating and the audience for listening. Thank you. And good night.